This is us.
Hey Marty.
Huh?
We'll get out of here by fifteen after nine.
After seven?
Nine.
Oh, yeah, I'll get you out of here.
Well, I gotta be back in the gate at ten o'clock or I got to park outside.
All right, we'll get you in there. Today's the eighth, isn't it? Okay. Let's call the September eighth meeting of the Anderson School District Three to order. At this time, we will say the pledge. Do we have one? Okay, everyone please stand.
It's to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We need to say that Dylan, one day them kids appreciate that when they're about twenty-five or thirty. At this time, I'll ask David Nixon to have our prayers.
The opportunity we have to gather gear, hold in a free country, in a great community, just forward, men, to do your work for us. And our district's been blessed because we've always held you at the center of our decisions and our board has held you at the center of their decisions. As long as we can prosper, Lord, I ask to plead the life of Miss Kristen, Lord. And also ask to be with the Burdette family, Lord, their suffering. Miss Burdette, she wrote to say, Lord, we ask to be put in heaven hands with her, Lord, and please, I'm sure I would comfort her around that family, Lord, if they'd be peace, if they may be there for her and justice for her. We ask all these things, and I...
Amen. All right, next thing is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections?
Nope.
Here none, I will ask for approval.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
All in favor? All right. Three of them. All right, I hope everyone had the opportunity to look over last month's minutes. We have any corrections or... Any final? Here none?
I'll make a motion. Will you accept?
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Three of them. All right, accommodations.
I'm gonna slide back for the picture. Not having to hide behind this, Tom.
Okay, tonight, we get the opportunity to recognize some of our staff who were selected as our of the years. And so, we will start with our Anderson Three Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Martina Zen, who is the art teacher at Striva Middle School and is our District Three Teacher of the Year. If you'll come up. All right, and then our Anderson Three Support Staff Person of the Year is Mrs. Kelly Brown. She's a paraprofessional at Star Elementary School. And then our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Jessica Blanton from Flat Rock Elementary School. You may have already noticed our Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Person of the Year billboard has gone up. It's near Homeland Park, coming back toward Iva and Star. And then our Support Staff for each building of the year, that billboard went up last week. And I think our Teacher of the Year billboard will go up next week. Yes. Okay, then our next person we want to recognize is our Bus Driver of the Month. We're starting a new program where each month, the transportation will recognize one of their drivers. And so, I'd like to read what was written about this driver, my Ms. Dodd. She said, "I would like to nominate Amanda McGuire for Bus Driver of the Month. Last Wednesday, she had a student lose consciousness on her bus. She remained calm and professional and offered assistance from working with the student to making sure we had accurate information for any medical alerts and contact information. She was so concerned about this student, and it is apparent that she loves all of our students." So, thank you for a job well done, and congratulations on being the September Bus Driver of the Month. I'm sorry, August Bus Driver of the Month. There's also a couple of things for you from the high school. Don't leave yet. And we thank you all for being here with us today. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but if you would like to... It's your bedtime. If you would like not to stay, this would be an appropriate time. But thank you for coming, and we're proud of you and the way you represent Anderson School District Three.
See you, bro. And we have no citizens' comments at this time, so Mr. Moore, turn it over to you.
All right. All right, so we'll start off taking a look at our general fund performance through the month of August. Still very early in the year, not a ton to glean at this point. But all that to say, we are in a very consistent spot where we expect to be when looking at prior years, typically about that five hundred thousand or so expenditures exceeding revenues. As you see there, we're at five ninety-five, two thirty. Starting from now all the way through December, you'd expect to see those expenditures exceeding our revenues up until the property tax revenues start coming in, as you can see consistently. January is where it turns from that red to black, like we like it. So, right now, we're where we typically want to be early in the year. We do have a few timing differences, just with some, like the instructional software, things like that. So, we might actually be lagging behind a little bit more than what's on the books right now, but nothing to the extent to get us worried about it so far. Property tax revenue, I know we touched on that a little bit last month about that amount still being accrued back to the prior year. So, we will start seeing that showing up on our reports next month. So, we don't still have any current year revenue for that coming in yet. I just want to touch on a very small number there, but I know we talked throughout the budget season about having some contingencies, being very conservative in some of our estimates there. Two months into the year, we've met our interest revenue budget. That we don't like to move that up and down a whole lot, just because those rates can change without our control, but that's when we routinely exceed our budget there, provides us a little bit of cushion and comfort throughout the year. So, other than that, that's really what I have on general fund. Any questions on general fund? Okay? And we do not have a sales tax collection to report for the month of August. We have not received that yet, at least not as of today, but we'll surely pass that along when that does come in. I do want to report kind of as, as, it's property tax and sales tax kind of news for you. Last year's collections, we saw were so strong in both arenas. It gave us a good enough starting balance for our debt service and our... Annually, we allocate a portion of our eighty percent capital use, a portion of our sales tax to help maintain our dirt debt service millage. Past couple of years, it's been at seven hundred thousand, but because of the strong collections we saw and a little bit due to that windfall we talked about last month, that sales tax transfer that we need to maintain the millage is going to be at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, it creates a bit of a margin there for our capital use portion of our sales tax as we go through FY twenty-five, twenty-six. But we'll keep you updated as that sales tax rolls in. Questions?
Thank you, bro.
Thank you.
This time, Ms. Amy Gray, technology update. Technology, you know, Mrs. Gray.
Y'all weren't supposed to hear that. I've already been reminded that there's a home sporting event, so I'm going to try to make this fast. The first thing I want to do is introduce my team. They're sitting in the back there. I think we have the best team in South Carolina, technology team, for sure. We've got Missy Rice, who's our database administrator. And if you go anywhere in South Carolina to a Power School conference, you'll find out she's a state treasure because people try to steal her away all the time. Logan Dixon is DJ in the back, and he is our district technology coordinator. Hogan Crawford is now the technology director, who manages the day-to-day technology in addition to the infrastructure and the networking. And then Cameron Spires is new. He's been here a month and a half, but he's not new to the district. He graduated in 2017, and he's our systems administrator, and he's over cybersecurity. Very extremely smart. He's getting his master's at Georgia Tech right now, right? So, we have a great team. Classroom devices, this is just an overview of how many we have, but also this summer, Flat Rock got new devices. All of our laptops are on a four-year refresh schedule, so next year, we star in Iva, and the next year, the district office in Pear Pros, and then the following year, Star Iva and Crescent. We have now the most Chromebooks we've ever had in the district, four thousand one hundred and thirteen Chromebooks. We deployed over a thousand new touchscreen Chromebooks this summer. And we also started a new Chromebook process where all fifth grade and ninth grade students will get a brand-new Chromebook every year, and they'll keep that same device for four years. After four years, if they have paid all of their school fees, all of their, if they've ever damaged a Chromebook, they've paid those fees, if they've paid their textbook fees, locker fees, all the things, they can keep that device at the end of four years. So, it gives them a great incentive to be good to their device and not tear it up. And, you know, we hope that it also incentivizes parents to pay the fees. So, we think it'll be a good thing. Right now, when we sell our Chromebooks, we get maybe four dollars for them, so it just really makes more sense. Interactive panels, we now, we got new ViewSonic panels, and now, every single one of our panels will allow us to wirelessly cast, so that teachers are no longer tethered to the board with their computer. They can walk around the room and still cast to the board. So, we are excited about that. Recent projects, Missy has really done a lot with EdFi and Power School. She's implemented the new standards for math and ELA and redesigned report cards. And we, she is also kind of over the data exchange for EdFi, which is the new central repository where the state gets all their assessment data. So, she spends a lot of time cleaning up data errors and things like that throughout the day. And then she also worked with Dr. Smith to integrate simple discipline. All of our schools are now using that for their discipline tracking, and it's got a lot of great features in addition to working with Power School. One of the things that everybody really likes is that it automates truancy monitoring. And since it integrates with Power School, it keeps up with unexcused absences, and it automatically generates those letters to go home to parents, so that somebody doesn't have to stay on top of that.
They still have to stay on top of it.
But it makes it a lot easier, because it does it for them. And then online registration, we have implemented final forms for student registration, and for the first time, we had less than ten families who did not register their students. That's amazing. We were very excited about that. And really, most of those, we know why. They were kids in alternative school and here and there. So, it was really good this year. For safety and security, this is just kind of a rundown of the security devices that we help manage. One of the new things on this list is the VoIP phones. We now have voice-over IP phones throughout the district, and I'll kind of go over that in a second. But first, I don't know why it looks so wonky, sorry, but the intercom systems, all of the schools as of the summer now have an IP-based intercom system. We did Iva and Flat Rock this summer. It allows for one central place to send messages. If Miss Hip wanted to, she could sit in her office and do an intercom announcement to all of the schools. It also has some really cool safety features. This one's really neat. It's called the check-in, and if they make an announcement, whatever the school's announcement is, the teacher can go and press the button on their wall, which is the call button, and it'll turn green. So, if anybody's ever in trouble, if it's still red, it means that the teacher has not been able to check in, and the police or first responders know exactly where to go. So, that's a really neat safety feature. Access control doors, you know about those. We have those throughout the district. But I did want to show you, every month, Dr. Nixon has all the principals do a held door check, and that's an example. If you see it down there, it says the CHS back entrance by Cafe has an open door. If it's held open for more than five seconds, which this one makes a lot of sense, they were probably getting a shipment, right? They hold the door open when food comes in. But the SROs are able to go in there every day at the end of the day and see if there's any doors that have been propped open, so that they don't leave with the door open. The environmental sensors, those have been in for a couple of years, but I did want to let you know that it's working to give us a lot of analytics as far as hotspots for vaping. It also gives us some really good health index numbers, and there was one bathroom in particular, the health index was just terrible, and Bones and Maintenance were right on it. As soon as I told them, they went in there and found out that the return had been shut off many years in the past, and so, the air quality was very bad, and they fixed it, and now our health index is generally pretty good. This is just an overview of the VoIP phones. Now, we can transfer calls within the district without having to tell people to hang up and call the school, which is a huge benefit. It also reduced costs, and I don't know exactly how much, but I think it's a pretty good cost savings. Security camera coverage, we are on a six-year refresh cycle for all of our security cameras. We added nine additional coverage areas this summer in addition to just the normal refresh. And we also have set up even more camera kiosks. The picture on the right is a picture of one of those always-on-camera kiosks, and that said that if the power goes out, it immediately comes back in, auto logs in, and pulls the cameras up, so that we don't ever have to worry about not being able to access cameras. All right, infrastructure. Did I get back? So, we just recently, with E-Rate Money, purchased a Y-Bot. We purchased five, six Y-Bots, and those are kind of wireless analysis tools that you can put in schools. I won't bore you with all the details, but it's really cool, because we've already implemented one, and you can see, you probably can't read it, because it's really small, but it showed us that there's two access points close together, they're on the same channel, and it's causing co-channel interference. That would have been impossible to know prior to this. So, we're able to easily see that, change it over to a new channel, and the wireless access quality is going to be a lot better for that classroom. We also were the only district in the upstate of South Carolina to be awarded the cyber E-Rate pilot money. We got a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and that funded our Palo Alto firewall, so we're really happy about that. And all schools and most business functions now have a business continuity plan, so that if the internet goes down, or if there's an natural disaster or catastrophe, they can operate without having the internet. Upcoming infrastructure projects, Kristy Dodd might be happy about this one. Flat Rock has had four AT&amp;T outages in the past ten days, and we would love to get them on West Carolina's fiber, just like our other locations. And so, we, Matthew and I are meeting with a category-one E-Rate consultant for options on how to build that fiber network out and hopefully pay for it with some E-Rate money. And then this summer, we'll be doing an access point replacement with E-Rate money. And then for cybersecurity, this is kind of like an onion. Security has so many layers. You can't do just one thing. And anyways, this kind of explains our layered approach to cybersecurity. I won't go through all of them, but I'm going to tell you about a couple of them that we're kind of proud of, that we've implemented recently. One thing I do want to say is we're a partner with SE KICK, which is a division of the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division, and they provide us with a lot of free things. They do tabletop exercises with us. They also do free phishing campaigns and training and remediation. If somebody fails the phishing test, SE KICK will send out remediation for them and follow up and make sure that they know what they did wrong. We also have Google multi-factor authentication for all employees, and in the past year, we've implemented Duo, which is just an added layer of multi-factor authentication for other systems besides Google, and that's for high-risk employees, including all the admin, guidance, secretaries, everybody in the district office. So, one of the main things that we implemented this past, probably in the past four months, was Proofpoint email protection, and we were really eager to get this done and excited to see the results. But you can see in the past seven days, twenty-nine thousand, almost thirty thousand emails have been blocked, that would not have normally probably been blocked. So, it's definitely working, and I'll show you an example on the next page. Also, we get a lot of email. We got seventy-eight thousand emails in the past seven days. Here's an impostor example. You can go to folders and look at the different types of things that were blocked, and this was an impostor. This one was to Dylan. He never saw it, because it didn't make it through, but it looks really believable. It says, "Hey, Dylan, are you available to assist?" "I'm unavailable for now, but I've got credence..." Credence in you taking care of this. They didn't use AI, I guess. Tennessee School Public Relations Association needs some gift cards. Dylan would not have fallen for this, but some people would. So, it's stopping things like this. And then here's a phishing example that it stopped, and this one went to Emily Gerard, was supposed to go to Emily Gerard, and it came from yale.edu, which is a real domain. But Proofpoint saw that the sender IP address didn't match what it was supposed to, and it blocked that. So, it's a good thing, because it was asking her to verify her Capital One credit card credentials. She wouldn't have fallen for it either, I'm sure. Also, the State Department provided us with this cybersecurity platform called BitSite Insights, and when we first got it, almost a year ago, actually, I think it was exactly a year ago in September of last year, our score was seven seventy. It's kind of like a credit score, eight-twenty's the highest you can get. So, our score was seven seventy, which was still on the green. It was still pretty good, but it gave us some recommendations on things to change, and we made a couple of modifications to our D-CAM record, and over the past year, it's gotten up to eight hundred. So, I think we have a really good cybersecurity score. If you look on down, there's a lot of information there. I could provide it to you if you need it, but it basically says that we're very low risk for ransomware or any type of cybersecurity incident. That's that. And then our upcoming projects, we, Windows eleven upgrades are almost complete. We want to do specialized cybersecurity training by job function, because we know that certain people are targeted more than others, especially the finance department. So, we want to implement that in the next year. Also, we know that eighty-eight percent of breaches come from our third-party vendors, so we want to work with Matthew to make sure that our vendor contracts kind of make it so that they shoulder the blame or the liability for any kind of cybersecurity incident on their watch. We also are going to get a new patch management tool, because the one that we currently use is being deprecated, and we want to have stronger password policies, so you might hear some groaning. Nobody wants longer passwords, but we need longer passwords, sorry. And then we're going to have to get a new virtual server, which will be a big expense. That's the thing about longer passwords, is if you make them longer, they're probably going to write them down and stick it on sticky note to the computer, which is also not good. It's a balancing act, so we're working through that. That's right.
We have way too much to remember.
Said that you haven't. We're also, one thing that Cameron's doing, that he brought from his previous experience, is monthly penetration tests, which is where you basically act like a hacker and try to hack into the system. And he has a specialized platform called Tenable Nessus that he does that with, and it goes through and just pecks away until it tries to get into our system, until it finally does or doesn't. But it gives us all these remediation kind of things to do every month. So, he's on top of that, doing that monthly and then remediating as he goes. Y'all have any questions?
Just a comment. That eight-hundred score is remarkable, to see that go up. Y'all already had a great score, but eight-hundred, I mean, that's...
Thank you.
Six volumes, so great job.
Do you at any point see us going away from Power School, or is it going to be here a while? Well, I mean, you hear some roaring out there, and that some other folks might want to switch us, but I mean, I don't know.
They, I think Dan Relyea is looking at it. He did also a couple of years ago look at it. It would be a major, major undertaking for the state, so I think he's getting pushback. But I don't know, Missy, have you heard anymore? I know that they are always looking at it, and especially since their cyber incident last year, Power School's cyber incident last year. That was, that was kind of, gave them a lot... That was, that was kind of, gave them a lot of reason to look.
Yeah, well.
Missy to stick around though, so we don't want to switch away from Power School anytime soon.
That'd be a nightmare.
It would be a nightmare.
Yep. Well, just keep us informed if we start saving our pennies for that.
You see, we just have to learn a new platform is what it is.
Yeah, hello, we're getting too old for that kind of stuff. Oh, wait.
That would be major.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate everything y'all do. Okay, Kathy.
All right, and thank you, Amy and your team. A- as you can tell, uh, technology used to be keeping computers going and keeping email going and it's gotten much, much more complicated than that, but y'all do a great job. Okay, tonight I wanted to share with you some district test scores that we're very proud of and then also talk about some areas where we know we need to, to work. Now, right now, we're just highlighting district scores and as report cards come out and things like that, we will um talk about individual school scores. So um the first thing I'll, uh, have you notice is we went back to see, of course, how we ranked in the state and, and, and then looked at our meets and exceeds average. We always start with test scores. You know, your first measure is, did we, did we go above state average? But we know state average is not where we want to be because we're not average. And so I am happy to report that really all of our scores were above the state average in, in whatever for meets and exceeds. Uh, you look at third grade, uh, let's start with ELA since it's first, very strong in ELA. Uh, grades three through six, we're all in the top eight in the state. And um, and then seven and eight, they're not too far behind, but I, I think, you know, you think about being in the top ten out of seventy-five districts and really the top eight, so that's a lot to be proud of. When you go to math, we were ranked number three in the state for third grade math, which is quite an accomplishment. And, and you know, when we're number three in the state, we're behind the York County districts who are one and two, so that's, that's phenomenal. Number for our fourth grade math, number five, sixth grade math, number seven, eighth, seventh grade math, number eight. And you know, we see the area we need to work on in math is predominantly fifth grade and eighth grade. And district-wide, when you see that, especially in fifth grade, it causes us to look back and think, okay, academically, did we miss something in fifth grade? Because it's just not one school that's being accounted for there. So we're, we're looking at that closely and how to remediate that, but you know, very proud of the scores that we have and, and our benchmark is at seventy-five percent meets and exceed, which is the state's. And so basically, we've met that in grade three for ELA and math. Uh, we've just got to get the others there too. When we go to end of course assessments, English two, we're second in the state. Um, to me, that's phenomenal progress. Uh, biology one, we're fourth in the state. Algebra fourteenth and US history is an area that we, we're, we're focusing on because we know that, that ranking is not where we want it to be. But very proud of where we see the district are, the district is at this point, knowing what we need to look at. Dylan, if you'll go to the next slide. Overall, uh, we, we also in, I'm trying to find my numbers here. We had significant improvement in both the LA and math. Third grade, the meets and exceeds for math, seventy-five point five percent compared to sixty-three point nine percent in twenty-twenty-four. So that's a eleven point six percent increase in third grade math. And then third grade ELA, seventy-four point five percent compared to sixty-three point nine. That's an increase of ten point six percent. So very excited to see that and I have to believe that the increases in third grade especially had a lot to do with our letters training, our letters initiative that's been going on for the last two years. I really think that, we know it helped in ELA, but also can't help but believe that if you can read better, you can read the math test better too. And so I think we'll continue to see gains on that. So, and as I showed there, the focus areas, math fluency everywhere, but especially in fifth and eighth grade, looking at the, the ZERN program that the state's now o- offering to see if that might be an answer for us. And then of course, US history, um, EOC improvement. We will not be given any algebra one EOC test, I think, this year with the change in math progression, so we won't even see any scores for algebra one next year. Any questions about the district scores?
Might have turned in the right direction.
They look great.
I did, another, and I put in the appendix items, some other charts I s- I keep, but we are, we've been watching that COVID gap in math and I think we've closed it basically, which is one way we, one place we wanted to, to get with that. So next slide is just the rankings that came out on SchoolDigger last week. We um, you can see the district is ranked number six. We did slide one, uh, one, one spot and that bothers me and we'll, we'll recapture it next year, but very close with that one, so we're still ranked number six. And that's the top eight percent in the state because there's seventy-five school districts. Star Elementary had its all-time highest ranking at number fifty. They came up two spots and they're in the top seven point eight percent in the state. And you see the others still very, very well represented in the state of how we're doing. Then there's a new report in SchoolDigger that looks at low socioeconomic status rankings. And really, when you, we never use poverty as an excuse, so that's something that I really don't dwell on when we talk about rankings because, you know, in the, probably in the middle school and high school rankings, if you threw out the first ten schools that were charter schools, then, then our rankings are ten points better. But you know, they're there and we're gonna, we're gonna measure ourselves against them, but when you look at the low socioeconomic reporting, you see that our rankings look even better and our percentages look better because it's, it's more ranking us against schools and districts like ourself. So it's a piece of information. There again, just showing us how we're stacking up against other, other districts and other schools. Okay, and I will point out in the appendix items, like I say, I go through and show how we stack up against everybody and those charts are against the top fifteen or twenty districts in the state. So when you look at that, note that we're, we're not including everybody. We're including that top group and see how, seeing how we stack up against them.
Sounds like a, we're doing a pretty good job right here.
Well, we, we have a great group of administrators and teachers out here getting it done, so.
I'm very proud of us.
They're working hard and it shows.
All right.
All right. Talk about the calendar.
Okay, we um, the calendar committee has met and this is the recommended calendar for next year. It passed unanimously with the uh, ten-member committee for the five school districts, which is each district has a representative and each uh, there's a, there's a admin representative and then there's a teacher staff representative. So it has us really starting school on a Thursday, kept the, the week at Thanksgiving, which everybody wants to keep and still has us getting out before Memorial Day. So I would ask for your approval of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar.
Make a motion, we approve it?
Second.
All in favor? Three oh. All right. You want to talk about?
We'll, we'll let, we'll let Mr. Moore talk about the funds transfer request.
All right, uh, a- as we kind of alluded to last month, uh, we'd be bringing this transfer to you. So um along with the superintendent's support, uh, we request a transfer eight hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents from the general fund uh, to the district's building fund. Uh, and that would be recorded in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five fiscal year. Uh, and that is in line with us having a twenty-five percent fund balance in relation to the following year's spending. And that chart below just walks you through the calculation that, that arrived us at that number. So um basically, we needed to add five hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars uh, to our fund balance to meet that twenty-five percent threshold. Uh, and for FY twenty-four, twenty-five and the general fund, uh, we are finishing at one million, three thirty-seven, four thirty-four and eighty-seven cents, uh, leaving that difference of eight sixteen, uh, seven oh nine eighty-seven to, that we're requesting a transfer. And then at the bottom, just showing you our updated balances in both the building fund account and then reconciling to that uh, unassigned fund balance there at the bottom um, that we're trying to get to there. So um, any questions on that?
So all the money is going toward the building fund?
The eight, so, so we're, we're finishing the year right now, that one point three million, five twenty staying in the general fund so that we're meeting our twenty-five percent goal there. And then that excess eight sixteen would go to the building fund.
So the complete transfer and that wouldn't change, like we would keep it in the building fund?
That's correct, that's correct.
And it, and do we, is there ever a time where we take it out of the building fund and put it somewhere else?
It could be with board approval.
Come before the board?
Those, yeah, that, those funds don't get used without board's approval.
We're going to leave them there for a while.
Maybe he's been there for a while, yeah.
That five million is in that account too.
That, this, you're referring to the state grant? That is a standalone grant, the, a separate, that we've, um, we don't, we did not get fronted the full five million. We got one point two five fronted to us and we have to provide quarterly reports on that and then once that gets spun up, then we receive our next allocation. So that is separate from the district building fund. That's in a s- special revenue fund. That gets factored in as well, that's correct.
All right.
Second.
All right, all up there. There we go. All righty.
Okay, we have uh several policies to, to bring to you for our first reading. All of these, the three we're bringing tonight really are things based on new laws that were passed in this past session. The first one is a brand-new policy, BEA live streaming of board meetings. This policy really came straight from the model policy that was provided by the School Boards Association and the, the State Department. So it meets the letter of the law. What it says is that we will live stream on YouTube, make it available, real time for public viewing. If there's a problem with it, then we will make sure it's, uh, this actually says, the letter of the law, seven days we have to get it up. It also says that we will let our advertise two days after the meeting that it's available. So um, this mu- does meet the letter of the law. It does say what happens if we do not do it, violation and penalties. So I would just bring this to you um for your approval for a first reading. We'll bring it back next month for our second reading. This has to start in January.
I make a motion for policy BEA live streaming of board meetings for our first reading.
All right, all in favor? First reading passes. All right.
Okay, the second policy to bring to you, this comes from the Educator Assistance Act and this is policy GCB, Professional Staff Contracts and Compensations. What is highlighted in the yellow is the specific changes we need to make. And I'll tell you, our prior policy met the letter of the law, but it was very general. It didn't have the dates in it like the May first. It didn't have the, about providing teachers with the factors used to determine their pay category on the salary schedule, things like that. So what you see highlighted in yellow is just what we had to add, the specific stuff to make it fit. The other thing that was in our old policy that I think it's time for it to come out is it talked about the Terry Program. And so I just removed that because that's closed out and it's non-issue. This present policy was last updated in twenty-fourteen. So making this change will um get us compliant with the, with the law.
All right. Should we make a motion on first reading? All right, Mr. Holbrook makes the motion on uh, for first reading?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Hannah. All in favor? And it's three oh. Okay.
Okay, and then the last policy for tonight is policy GBC. It's very similar to the other, but this is just a general staff compensation policy. And again, it, the highlight in yellow just gives specific dates, May the first of each year, and then it says that we'll give the projected salary schedule for the school year and it, and that when the final appropriations are out, that we'll give those to teachers. It also gives the date of contracts having to be returned to the superintendent before May eleventh. And again, we've always followed the date that's in law, so we were covered by our policy, but this just makes it more specific and is recommended that we go ahead and put those specific dates in policy.
All right. I entertain a motion for a first reading for staff compensation?
Make a motion that we have first reading for policy GBC, staff compensation.
All in favor? Three oh, passes on first reading. And I guess. We've covered all the appendix items.
Yes.
All right, at this time, we will entertain a motion to enter an executive session for contractual and personnel matters. Have a motion? We have a second, all in favor? Three oh. Folks, thank y'all so much for coming. Appreciate everything y'all do. Have a safe trip.